This conference will now be recorded.
Chairman, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. All right. Good evening. This is Len Petrasoli. I'm Chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals. And due to the coronavirus nineteen pandemic, we are conducting this meeting on go-to meetings on Tuesday, May 5th, 2020. Jay, you already did the roll call. I'll just do a quick again. Gavin Forrester, Lynette Streets.
Here.
Mary Young.
Here.
Okay, Lorenzo Elder is not here. Ron Ticky.
Here.
And Judy Clary.
Here.
Okay, I'll point Judy Clary to take in for Lorenzo Elder since she attends all of the meetings as an alternate. Okay, also should be Jay Abansky.
Here.
Alex Flor.
I'm here.
Gail DeCilio.
I'm here.
Okay, before I call a meeting to order, I'd like to remind everyone to raise their hands if they would like to be recognized by the Chair and wait to be recognized on call on each and every time throughout the meeting. Please identify yourself by your name and title every time you'd like to speak. This is per Governor Lamont's executive order, which allows us to conduct virtual meetings. The public is free to listen, but may speak only at the invitation of the Chair. With that said, I call this monthly meeting of the Board of Appeals to Order at 7:13 PM. Before we get started, I am going to add that after discussions with the town attorneys on allowing the public to have input, we will not do our, I will recess the meeting after the meeting closes and we will reschedule for May 19th another meeting to vote and give the public an opportunity to either before or against emails, or they can phone in at that meeting. Okay, the first item on the agenda, I'd ask Mary Young to please read it at the Storm Drive.
Mary Young speaking. Zorn Dorn Drive, petition of the town of Stratford, seeking a site plan review and waiver on section 3.18 regarding fence height from 3.5 feet to 6 feet to construct a six-foot tall fence in the first 25 front lot line, property line, incidental to a park in an RS-3 zone. Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Esposito, I assume that's why you're here. Just identify yourself for the record.
Sure. Good evening, everybody. I'm Chad Esposito, I'm the Park Superintendent for the town of Stratford.
Do you want to go ahead and present your petition just briefly?
Sure. What we're looking for tonight is to that variance to go from 3.5 feet to 6 feet along the fence line, about 2,100 linear feet along Short Beach Road. So we have problems, numerous problems throughout the year, golf season, with beachgoers hopping the fence and walking directly into play of golf balls and people. And we've had altercations. We've had a couple of people have been struck by golf balls. So we're looking for a public safety to raise the fence height. We also deal with at 4th of July, when we shoot off the fireworks on the second fairway, the perimeter fence along Short Beach Drive on the other side is the 1,000 no-enter zone. So raising this fence height will discourage people from hopping the fence to try and get to the parking lot. So again, it's another safety matter that we're looking to alleviate.
Thank you, Mr. Esposito. Are there any questions from the Commissioners? Hearing none. Thank you, Mr. Esposito. That was easy for you, huh?
That was great. Thank you. Everybody have a good evening and may they stay.
Thank you, Chad. All right, Victoria Lawne has been dropped. Ross Drive, Fifth Street.
Motion to crown.
Oh, yeah, go ahead. Motion by, hang on, Mr. Flor.
Yeah, so we're going to allow the public to address these applications at a meeting in two weeks. So I would just ask that the ZBA keep all of the applications open, the public hearings open, so that if anyone wants to speak about any of the applications, they'll have an opportunity to do that in two weeks. I believe that is May 19th. So don't close any, don't close any of the public hearings because we'll need to keep them open to allow the public to opine.
All right, so we can just hear all of them and don't close any of them.
Yeah, I would say just go through all of the applications and then keep them all open in two weeks, we'll allow public comment.
All right. Thank you, Attorney Flor. All right, then we'll go to number two. Mrs. Streets, which I believe is Ross Drive.
Okay, 50 Ross Drive, petition of Patrick Fogno seeking a site plan review and waiver of section 3.14 to waive the required setback from an inland wetland from 50 feet to 16.1 feet to construct an above-ground pool incidental to a single-family dwelling in an RS1 zone.
Is the applicant present? Pat, can you turn on your, I think your phone is muted, Pat? Just give the applicant a moment.
I don't know.
There you are. Pat, can you unmute your phone?
It did already. Can you not hear me?
Okay, good. I can, I can hear you now. Go ahead.
Okay, hi, I'm Kim Fogno, Pat's wife. So, you know, we're just applying to have the above-ground pool in the backyard. And we know that we're not 50 feet, as the town states you have to be 50 feet from a wetland. Unfortunately, we don't have 50 feet in our backyard as it is. So this is really the only place we can put the pool. We do have an easement on our property as well. We have even mesh power lines that are owned by Everstein that run through the interior yard where we cannot put any building or structure under. So this is really the only location that we can have the pool. So we have done a wetland survey and a property survey, you know, in order to hopefully get this approved so we can have the pool installed.
Thank you. Questions of the Commissioners? Hearing none. We'll move on to Shoreline Drive.
I had a question. I didn't know how to read.
Mary, Mrs. Young, you have a question?
My apologies, Mary Young. I'm just following instructions. I raised my hand visually. Should I just?
All right, I didn't see. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Once again, Mary Young for the record. I had a chance to read Jay Abansky's staff report dated March 19th. I'm hoping the applicant had the same opportunity to view that document because I would like to reference it. May I ask if the applicant has had a chance to see this document?
Let me see here. This is a March 14th document.
I believe March 19th, Mary Young speaking. But Jay Abansky perhaps can confirm?
Sorry, I was on mute. This is Jay Abansky. It was posted to your application on the website. It would be in the staff comments dated March 19th.
Okay. Kim Fogno speaking. I'm putting the word document. Is it, it says 50 Ross Drive, 314 school. It is dated March 19th. So yes, I do have it in front of me.
Mary Young speaking. Thank you. So in looking at this document, I read that the Conservation Administrator found no reason not to support this application. So that's positive for you. I also read that Jay Abansky cites some of the unique conditions associated with your property having to do with the ever-source line and the presence of wetlands. What I'm looking for, and perhaps I'll make you repeat yourself, forgive me, I'm looking for hardship that the board could recognize if we were inclined to grant sure variance. I'm done.
Kim Fogno speaking. You know, for us, I would think the hardship would be that we, there is no other location on our property to install the pool. We don't have any other options. We have also already purchased the pool and it is sitting in boxes in our driveway. We did receive the wetland permit already. So, you know, I don't, I'm not sure what another hardship would be other than, you know, we, we have the pool and, you know, and with our property, even though it is large, we don't have really use of much of it because of, you know, the power lines and now that we know, you know, the issue with the wetlands. So, you know, that is, that's what we're dealing with.
Mary Young?
Go ahead, Mary.
Thank you. Mr. Abansky, is there an opportunity, do you think, for you to weigh in at this point or perhaps with our continuation on May 19th? As to, do you believe there's something in the record already that we could rely upon to find hardship? Or should we provide a homework assignment to this good applicant between now and the 19th? I'm done.
Well, yes, this is Jay Abansky here. And, you know, if you read the last, and this is part of the record, these are the staff comments that the applicant was just looking at and that you referenced earlier. If you look at the last, maybe three or four sentences, I make a few comments and I'll read those into the record for the applicant. It's important to understand that the mere presence of wetlands or an easement on or adjacent to the property would not necessarily constitute a legal hardship. However, the subject property has very limited options to fully develop within the confines of the zoning regulations based on the above-mentioned factors. You know, I tried to play with the dimensions of the pool as much as I could, and I couldn't find a way that would conflict either with the easement, with the wetlands, or with the zoning regulations requiring certain distances of the pool from the street and other, and other, other things. So I think that is what the applicant would, would state as a hardship because when you look at the definition of the state statute for the hardship, it's something that's unusual or unique that makes it almost physically impossible for the applicant to comply with the zoning regulations. So that's what I would lean on if I were the applicant as a hardship.
Mary Young, thank you, Mr. Abansky.
Thank you. Any other Commissioners have any questions on this petition?
Wait a second.
Who's this? No, no other question? Then we'll move on to Shoreline Drive. You have a long last name, Maria, so I'm just going to say Maria, you're on.
Hi.
Just take the name and address for the record.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Maria Pasalucio, 61 Shoreline Drive, Stratford, Connecticut. And I am putting in a petition to renovate and add a little bit to the house on 61 Shoreline Drive. The house is about 100 years old and is in dire need of renovation. It needs to be razed and the deck needs to be restored for security and safety purposes and to be in line with the other houses in the association. The renovations have been approved already by all of the neighbors within this association.
Thank you. Any questions to the Commissioners? If you raise your hand, raise it high. Mrs. Young.
Mary Young for the record. To our applicant, I'm again going to refer to the staff comments prepared by Dave Abansky, in this case dated March 23rd, posted onto the town's website. I'm hoping you had a chance to see that as well. On page two of those comments, the end of the first paragraph on page two of Mr. Abansky's comments, he says, "As the hardship is self-created, the board does not appear to have the authority to grant the requested variance per eight-six of the Connecticut General Statutes." I wonder if you can speak to that? I'm done.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Anyone else have any questions? Is there a response? Maria, you have a response or?
You're asking me that question? I don't think the, I don't think the association was approving it as if they were the town, but that all the neighbors, in my understanding, part of the, of the association is any renovation have to be approved by all, about at least 75% of the association, including the closely surrounding neighbors, so the two on the side and the two across. So I think it was an approval that the association approves with the renovations to, you know, make the house safe and secure, yeah. I'm not, I'm not sure if that answers the question. I don't, I didn't think they were giving the variance. I think they were just giving approval within their association, within this association.
All right, thank you. Anyone else have any questions? Mrs. Young, off set?
Well, I don't, Mary Young for the record. I appreciate that the applicant secured the necessary approval from her association. That's wonderful. And I believe the applicant, when we reviewed this again on May 19th, should speak to that last point. I quoted from Jay's staff comments, "As that burden is upon her to provide to us the hardship argument that can legally stand, but we can have authority to grant her for variance." I'm done.
Can I have clarity on what, what, what is needed, please?
Mr. Abansky.
Go ahead, Mary. Mrs. Young? Mrs. Young, go ahead.
I was suggesting, Mary Young speaking, Mr. Abansky might like to speak to that question.
Mr. Abansky. Sure, this is Jay Abansky. So, Maria, in order for the Zoning Board of Appeals to have the statutory authority to grant a variance of the zoning regulations, essentially breaking the rules, there has, there's a very narrow window of, of criteria that an application has to meet. And it's something that's physically unique about the property that makes it impossible to comply with the zoning regulations, or next to impossible, to comply with the zoning regulations. And I think that's what Commissioner Young is asking, is, is there something that you feel that is either physically impossible, that doesn't allow you to comply with the zoning regulations? For example, could you rebuild in the same footprint that would not require a variance? Or is there something regarding the elevation of the property to comply with FEMA standards that makes your home safer, or something about your home that makes, that reduces a public safety issue?
So is it just, is it just the adding of the eight feet going back that makes, that, that is requiring special permission? I mean, the house for safety reasons and the court, and according to FEMA to put, make any renovations, the house has to be lifted. There, you know, part of the deck is unsafe to walk on, you know, you could feel it shaking going on it. And then as you're lifting the house and making it more accordance, in accordance to what the other, the other houses here in the, in this association, you know, the eight feet provides the opportunity, I don't know, the house is 100 years old, it has a brick fireplace that goes through the whole center of the house that has to be removed in order to lift the house, obviously. So that, that space, to be able to move the fireplace someplace else, requires some space for that, which is where the eight feet, you know, part of the reconstruction of the house to change it around is adding the eight feet. But the real problem is the need to lift the house and, what's the word I'm looking for, to, to rebuild the structure because it, obviously at some point was built as just a cottage or something, but it's not, it doesn't have insulation, it doesn't have, you know, the walls shake, it needs to be strengthened.
Anyone else?
Mr. Abansky. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, this is Jay Abansky. And just for the applicant's record, for the applicant's knowledge, I'm sorry. The reason for the expansions that I was mentioning that are really requiring, that are triggering the variance are the expansion towards the driveway and the, the expansion of the home towards the driveway, and then the expanding of the deck on the waterward side.
Okay, and according to the, my understanding is that the deck can be 12 feet. And the deck currently, the way it curves, is not quite 12 feet all around. And so that was the difference there. It wasn't going beyond what was, my understanding, what was allowed within the, being the waterfront property. But if, it has to be 10 feet, it's 10 feet. But it, my understanding was it could be 12 feet.
All right, any other questions from Commissioners? Mr. Abansky, you're off set? Okay. All right, with that said, let's move on to King Street. And I'd have, I keep forgetting to do this, but have Mr. Forrester read it to the record, King Street.
Mr. Chairman, question. Is there a reason we're not, is there a reason we're not taking each one in order? I'm just wondering why we're bouncing around.
Who's this?
This is Commissioner Forrester, my apology. Commissioner Forrester. You want me to read them?
I'm reading them on the, on the Zoning Board of Appeals applications on the website.
Okay, because I'm looking at the actual notice and agenda. So that's why I'm trying to figure out where we're going here. So you want me to read item number eight, 216 King Street, correct?
Yes. Yeah, that was probably listed last on the agenda, but we're going to get through them all anyway.
Very good then. 216 King Street, petition of David Art Trombetta seeking a site plan review and waiver of section 4.2 to waive the side setback of the principal structure to create an additional building lot in RS4 zone.
Thank you, Mr. Forrester. With the petitioner, just state your name and your address.
Sure. This is Amy Sutgens. I'm here representing, can you hear me?
Okay. Yep.
Okay. Amy Sutgens here representing Soundshore Holdings LLC, which is the property owner at 416 King Street. And also on the call with me is a member of Soundshore Holdings, David Trombetta. He's here. And so just briefly, this is a request for a side yard variance, seeking a side yard of 2.2 feet where 10 feet is required on the property at 216 King Street. This is directly adjacent to Stratford High School. And the proposal in need for the variance is based upon Mr. Trombetta's desire to eventually subdivide the property to create a rear lot. The hardship is that the lot is unusually long and narrow in addition to its common boundary with Stratford High School. There, Mr. Trombetta has actually given, or the LLC has given the town of Stratford an easement in connection with the construction of the high school to allow the removal of some trees that would facilitate the construction of the, or construction work that's going on on the high school property. As I said, the ultimate goal here is that he seeks to redevelop the underutilized back portion of the property. There are several other rear lots in the immediate vicinity. And what he would like to do is to be able to eventually develop that area, likely with a single-family home. And part of the development plan, or the conceptual plan that he's working through, that's included in the map that shows where we need the side yard setback variance, is designed to include a driveway loop that would facilitate better and safer access to this property and any of, any eventual home on a rear lot, given the traffic with the school and the use of the property as a rooming house. There's some, you know, there's a fair number of vehicles on the street. And so he believes that redesigning the driveway would be helpful to address those issues. The side yard, as I said, is, the request is for 2.2 feet where 10 feet is required. That would be to the location of the new proposed rear lot property line. The practical effect is that because a 25-foot driveway would be required, the existing, just over 27 feet that exists would basically, in practical effect, remain because that area, although the legal property line would be 2.2 feet from the existing structure at 216 King Street, that 25 feet would be the driveway and basically be the access point to the, to the rear lot. So it would maintain the same type of building separation and open space. That would be the goal of having a side yard setback. There were two neighbor letters that were submitted in the last week or so to Mr. Abansky. They were the property owners, both of them on Selick Street or South Place, the Mr. and Mrs. Graswald, who are adjacent to the rear portion of the existing property at 216 King, and Ms. Del Vecchio, who is along the side lot line. Most importantly, when you look at the survey for the property, neither of these two property owners are in the area where the variance is requested. The variance is at the front part of the house. So there, Mr. Trombetta reached out to both of them to find out what their concerns were because frankly, the issues that were raised in those letters weren't really specific to the variance request, but were related to a potential future development here. He spoke with them, both of them, in the last couple of days. And as we expected from those letters, their concerns were focused on any eventual development that might have, need to happen on the rear lot, specifically with respect to screening and drainage in the, adjacent to their homes. There are some grade changes and retaining walls in the area. So it's certainly an issue that we were aware of. And with, with, with respect to the, those questions, we were, you know, if, if the variance is granted, Mr. Trombetta would need to hire an engineer to look at all of the various issues associated with a subdivision and development on the rear lot. We would obviously need to comply with whatever zoning regulations and certainly would need to take into account stormwater or screening requirements associated with any development on the lot. The goal would be to Uh, the goal would be to uh, exceed what the minimum requirements would be. Uh, he has a good relationship with these, uh, with, with all of his neighbors, and uh, really believes that he is able to um, address their concerns in any uh, eventual development plan. So with that, the, um, if there are any questions about the conversations he had with uh, these property owners, he's, he's available to answer questions, um, but otherwise, I'm happy to answer um, any issues that the, the board members may have.
Questions of the commissioners? Ms. Young, you're on.
Yeah, for the record, Attorney Ms. Stevens, in the meeting. I understand. And she gets it out, she don't want, she doesn't, I don't say, ask the question, what is hardship? And the answer is, see the letter, I did, I make sure I'm talking as, from, look.
Um, I, I'm.
From Dave Trombetta, is that the letter?
I'm sorry, Ms. Young, I'm not sure if it's just me, but I, the, I can't really understand your question, you're very garbled, if it's just me or somebody that can speak that.
Mary Young, is this better?
Yes.
That's better, thank you.
My apologies, let me try this again. I'm trying to make sure I understand your client's hardship argument. On the application form, it suggests to see attached letter. Is that the April 1st letter signed by Dave Trombetta?
That's correct.
Mary Young, and can you highlight the line in that letter that would help answer the question of what hardship is there to support the granting of the variance?
Certainly, in the second paragraph of the letter, we note that the property is unique, uh, and unusually long and narrow, and the variance thought is the minimum necessary uh, to achieve our goal, and then the share, that, that sort of unique, uh, the hardship would be the, the configuration of the lot and the shared property line uh, with the, with the high school.
Mary Young, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, I'm done.
Any other commissioners have any questions? Hearing none, we can move on to Whipper Will Lane, and I would ask Judy Clary to read it if you can, uh, I'm going off of the website, it has all the exhibits with it, not off of the agenda.
Yeah, this is Jay Habansky, just for clarity, the website, I believe, just does it, I think they're doing it alphabetically, I'm not sure.
Right, right.
Okay, this is Judy Clary, reading number five, 300 Whipper Will Lane. Petition of Willie McAllister, seeking a site and plan review and waiver of section 4.2 regarding the front setback from 40 to 27.7 feet, and the side setback from 35 feet to 9.7. To construct a front-side porch incidental to a single-family dwelling.
Thank you. The petitioner present?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, this is Attorney Carl Glad on behalf of Willie McAllister.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, so this uh, appeal uh, is obviously for a variance to uh, put a deck, uh, to replace an existing side deck and put a front deck uh, on an existing uh, single-family home on Whipper Will Lane, uh, the home was built in 1946. Uh, the front deck uh, would extend out eight feet um, from the current uh, front of the property. Uh, my client purchased this property and uh, it required extensive renovation due to existing water damage, with that included replacing the entire front wall, uh, and the front, and the deck would extend from the front wall and then uh, provide additional ingress and egress um, in and out of the struc- uh, in and out of the structure. Um, obviously, this uh, is just the front deck, it does maintain that the uh, single family uh, in the um, in the area, uh, and actually would still, uh, as, as it does go, move forward, the um, deck would remain within the sort of east-west boundaries of the uh, current design of the house, uh, current, current design of the structure. Um, and additionally, there are a number of other properties in the area um, that have front decks, and their um, their setbacks are, even with the addition of our, this uh, new front deck, their setbacks are uh, less than uh, what we are requesting here, uh, which also includes um, the immediate neighboring number, uh, 410 Whipper Will Lane, uh, which Exhibit A includes a few uh, images of the, comparing the two properties next to each other. Uh, this property, the hardship stems from this property uh, being unique and unusual in the district. Um, it is awfully long and narrow, um, it is a uh, 1.29 acres, but the frontage is only 88.68 feet, um, as shown on the site plan. Um, it's narrow and on top of that Whipper Will Lane, um, it comes to a bend at the point where the uh, uh, at a, at the point where the frontage of the property is, so um, the front uh, lawn is also angled to um, uh, which causes a, which causes the front, the frontage to be um, smaller. Uh, additionally, the existing property, which again, or the existing structure built in 1946, is angled and so it is not parallel to the uh, to the boundary lines of the property, it's actually angled opposite of Whipper Will Lane, which again, um, causes uh, causes a reduction in the uh, ability to uh, to build forward, or to any angle actually, without uh, without a variance. Um, this uh, property, what's um, also interesting about this property, um, and sort of unique to this area is that um, it goes back, the boundary lines go back to at least 1914, although um, it's unclear when they actually were uh, were developed. The exhibits, uh, including all the maps and deeds that I've provided, show you all of the uh, boundary lines as provided in the neighboring properties, but there's no single map for this property, which is uh, until the uh, until last year, when a survey was done of the property. Um, we know that uh, there was a survey in 1947 done by Anna Wilson of the general area um, that is referenced uh, throughout the land records, but that survey's not on the, actually in the land record, so it makes it difficult to find. Um, so again, really, the, the hardship we have here is this narrow, the narrow boundaries, the bend in the Whipper Will Lane creates in this property, and the existence of this uh, property and its angle, um, and closeness to the boundary lines, uh, make this hardship for this property.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney Glad. Question? Ms. Young.
Uh, thank you, Mary Young, speaking, hopefully you can hear me, yes?
Yes, I can.
Uh, my question is to the applicant, I'm hoping you have had a chance to review Dave Habansky's March 20th staff comments in his discussion.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. In his discussion, he suggests the board may want to inquire if the applicant has considered reducing the size of the deck minimally by two feet to eliminate one of the requested variances. Can I ask you to speak to that?
Uh, sure, um, the way that the design is currently, um, it maintains the lines of the house, so the western boundary of the deck is in line with the western boundary of the current structure, and again, eastern boundary is, there's an existing deck uh, on the eastern side of the house, and uh, that would maintain that line as well. So it retains the, the, the current look and uh, of the property. Um, additionally, that, you know, the angle of the house makes it awfully, really, any other direction you build off, you, you run into a variance issue as well, so um, while um, so, so that really is uh, the answer to that question. We're maintaining, maintaining the, the, the current prop, the current design of the structure as best as possible.
Mary Young, thank you very much.
Any other commissioners, questions of Attorney Glad? Mr. Habansky?
Yes, uh, just, Jay Habansky, just for the record, and I don't have it stated in my staff comments, uh, but it should be in there, that uh, the, the, the minimum lot width for this zone is 150 feet, and I know the applicant touched on it, but I just wanted to clearly state it from my perspective, since I should have included it in staff comments, uh, the existing frontage is only 91.5. Um, that also making it exceptionally difficult, I think, for the applicant to comply with the zoning regulations, and, and that would typically be considered a hardship by the zoning board of appeals. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from commissioners? Hearing none, we can move on to Honey Spot and 260 Stack Street. Uh, Ms. Young, if you could read that one, please, into the record.
Mary Young, 740 Honey Spot Road, Lot B, and 260 Stack Street, Lot B. Petition of Daytona Partners GT LLC, seeking a site plan review and waivers of the minimum side yard, rear yard, maximum impervious area, and minimum open space for Lot A, and waivers of the minimum lot area, lot depth, side yard, rear yard, maximum impervious area, minimum open space for Lot B, to create a new parcel incidental to warehouse motor vehicle repair facility in MA Zone. Mr. Chairman?
Is the petitioner present?
Yes, yes, I am, Attorney Charles Willinger.
Just identify yourself.
Yes, Attorney Charles Willinger, 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 and Bucy. Hopefully you could hear me, Mr. Bansky.
Yes, you're fine, go ahead.
All right, uh, uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission and staff, good evening, my name is Charles Willinger, I represent the petitioner, uh, Daytona Partners. We have a, a plan, which I'm assuming all the commissioners have, uh, and have reviewed. Uh, it shows uh, the, a property, uh, on the bottom of the plan is Stack Street, that's the south of the property, on the east side is Honey Spot Road, uh, and um, there are two buildings, uh, on two different addresses on this property. The building closest to Honey Spot Road is known as 740 Honey Spot Road, uh, it's a um, uh, it's a auto body repair facility, uh, and it's uh, leased by uh, a Maxi's, uh, Maxi's, I believe the name is General Auto Repair, it's an auto body shop. Uh, and to the west of that is another building, that's 260 Stack Street, uh, and that is a property that is an automotive parts warehouse facility. Uh, now, my client, uh, Daytona, uh, obviously owns both of those buildings, although it only operates uh, on the warehouse uh, property, 260 Stack, uh, and there was an existing lease when we purchased the property, my client purchased the property about two years ago, in fact, July will be two years, so less than two years ago, and there was an existing lease uh, with uh, Maxi's. Uh, I should say that the property is in your MA light industrial district, uh, so these two, these are uh, permitted uses, uh, and we're here uh, basically seeking uh, a variance to divide the property. Uh, there's a very good reason why we went on, uh, want to divide the property, which is the basis of our hardship, which I'll get into in a few minutes. Uh, but um, I will say that there are 10 variances, nine of the variances, though, are all relating to pre-existing conditions. Those other nine variances are, include side yard, rear yard, impervious area, open space, lot depth, but those are all caused by the fact that these are pre-existing buildings, uh, and where they were built, and how they were built, and where the parking is, uh, this would necessitate these variances for any, for literally any use that you want uh, to do on the property. Uh, but they are due to pre-existing conditions, and that's a big distinction. Now, we are not making the property any less conforming, except for one thing, if we divide the property in your MA Zone, you need a minimum of 10,000 square feet. Uh, the uh, Honey Spot Road property, which is proposed Lot B, will be 8377, so it's a little less than the 10,000 square feet. However, the other parcel, uh, Lot A, the warehouse facility, will be 11,614 square feet, so that would be more than the 10,000. Uh, we can't cut it any other way because of the, uh, obviously, the existing building uh, on Stack, we don't want to, you know, cut into the building to make, uh, to, to pick up another uh, 1,700 square feet. Uh, so, we're not making it less conforming, other than that one issue with Lot B. Uh, and so what this really amounts to is a, a lot area variance. Will you allow one lot to be slightly less uh, than the lot area that your zone regulations call for? I think there are good reasons why you should, and we'll discuss that. Uh, the warehouse building on 260 Stack, uh, uh, and that building that's on it, by the way, is 6,000 square feet. It is, uh, as I said before, an auto parts store, uh, it's uh, in fact, what they call a pickup warehouse facility. Uh, it's no retail at all, it's wholly, uh, just solely wholesale, and what happens is uh, other auto body shops or auto parts stores go to the premise, go to the property, pick up whatever part they need to sell to their customer, and take it away for their use. The building itself on 260 Stack has been a auto uh, uh, parts warehouse for a little bit more than 40 years. My client purchased it from Prime Auto, we kept the name, by the way, but if you saw the, I don't know if the commission goes out and views all these properties, but if you did, you would see that, that particular building is very well-maintained, uh, very functional, and there are no environmental issues at all on 260 Stack. As to 740 Honey Spot, that's an entirely different story. On that building, you, on that property, I'm sorry, there is an old shed building, it's 1,800 square feet, and it's in bad condition. Uh, the prior uses, about 65 years ago, that piece, that 740 Honey Spot uh, uh, piece was a gas station, and then for the last 60 or 50, 50 years or so, it's been a, a number of auto body shops. Uh, the current, as I said before, the current auto body owner is, it's called Maxi's, it's a fellow by the name of Trevor Maximum, uh, he was on the site several years before my clients bought the property, uh, and so we were basically, you know, stuck with his uh, with his uh, lease. Uh, now, the 740 property itself, the building itself inside contains a paint spray booth, a below-grade service pit, uh, it's basically a typical auto body repair facility. The key fact that you need to know, though, uh, commissioners, is that that property has extremely high environmental contamination, uh, and my client, after they purchased it, contacted the DEEP, and will be, and has filed the forms to remediate, remediate means clean, to clean that property when Max is off the site, when Maxi is off the site. Uh, and um, recently, his lease, Maxi's lease ran out, we're giving him a few months now, he's month to month now, we want to give him a few months to relocate, uh, and then when he is uh, out, uh, we're going to uh, effectuate the remediation on that site. So, in reference to the main variance, which is to divide the property, it makes sense, and, and I think you could see that from the background I just gave you, and from looking at the property, uh, that it, uh, the property is really separate and distinct, those two uh, properties are, and buildings are separate and distinct. They have separate access, they have separate parking, they have separate buildings, they've had separate addresses, separate operations, separate and very different uses, uh, and they also have, and I think this is another key for your decision, they have vastly different effects on the neighborhood. 260 Stack, the building that we want to keep and my client is operating in, uh, has no environmental concerns and has no- no environmental concerns and has no adverse aesthetic or aesthetic conditions on the site. In other words, the site is compatible with the other buildings in the neighborhood. Seven forty, though, that building, frankly, it looks like a junkyard. It has bad environmental problems, and it affects the neighborhood not only from an environmental standpoint, but from an aesthetic standpoint. It looks like a junkyard, and if you went out, and it would be prior to the hearing, you would see what I'm talking about. Now, our plan, as the new owner of this property, is simple but important. We are going, we want to mortgage our property, that is, two sixty, put a mortgage on two sixty Stag Street. And with those funds, we're going to demolish that old building on seven forty. We're going to remediate the site environmentally in accordance with the D E E P directives. And then we're going to do a, hope to do a bill to suit, so we can get a tenant that would be more appropriate to the neighborhood and more in line with my client's philosophy on how they keep and maintain property. We don't want any eyesores on that, on that site. And so the basis of the hardship rests with the fact that if this is not subdivided, if we can't subdivide the property, the D E E P, Department of Environmental Protection, has to classify this site as an establishment. I don't want to go into great detail what that is, but an auto body shop, dealing with paint particularly and other particles, is classified as an establishment. And if you're an establishment, you have very rigorous cleanup obligations. This more so than normal, actually, this site, because it's been dirty since it was a gas station sixty-five years ago. But in any event, if it's not, if it's, if we can't subdivide, then the entire site is an establishment. And that isn't right, because there's no environmental on our site, but that's the law. The entire site would be an establishment. And if you're an establishment, it's impossible, impossible to get any kind of a mortgage on that property to effectuate any kind of a cleanup. So we can't get the money, we can't clean up the dirty site. The other thing that is, and you're, you're really an agency of equity, you want to do the right thing, the fair thing, it would be unfair to, and it would misrepresent the facts if two sixty Stag had to be painted with the same brush as seven forty Honey Spot, because it isn't. It's a misrepresentation to call us an environmentally tainted property. So the hardship is directly related to the environmental condition on seven forty Honey Spot Road. Dividing them is going to greatly enhance our efforts to demolish it, and as I said before, to clean it up and to get a new tenant there. Now, I'm aware of Mr. Bansky's very negative report dated April three. And we take issue with the conclusions, but I don't blame Mr. Bansky, because he, obviously, he didn't know all the details, and he wouldn't be expected to know all the details that I've just explained to you. But if you take a look at his report, and I'm sure you have, he notes the ten variances, and he mentions creating new nonconformities. Well, nine of those variances are pre-existing conditions, so there's no nonconformities that we're creating there. The only new nonconformity is a slightly smaller Lot B. But in his second paragraph, I'm sorry, his third paragraph, Mr. Bansky says, what is the, what are the different scenarios if the subject parcel remains one or two lots? You didn't, obviously, you didn't know. Well, the big difference is, if it's one lot, we're stuck with this property as it is. We can't do anything, our hands are tied. If it's two lots, we eliminate an eyesore, and we clean the property. A big difference. Mr. Bansky, in the next paragraph, asks, is the subdivision of land required for this site cleanup or just preferred? Well, first of all, it is definitely preferred, but it's not preferred just by us, it's preferred by our neighbors, and it should be preferred by the city, too, because we're eliminating blight and we're eliminating environmental conditions. But it's also required, that's the only way we're going to effectuate that cleanup for the site. It's the only way that we can as a practical matter. And then the last page of Mr. Bansky's report, he opines that the hardship appears to be self-created. Well, we disagree with that as well. It isn't self-created. That pollution on that site was done, started sixty-five years ago. We had nothing to do, the applicant had nothing to do with that environmental condition. Now, we bought it knowing it was an auto shop, so we speculated that there probably would be environmental, but we did it knowing that as soon as we can get that, that auto body shop off the site, we were going to clean it up at our cost, by the way, considerable cost. So knowing the facts, I would venture to guess that Mr. Bansky may have a different opinion in reference to the facts that I just explained and how they relate to hardship. And let me just say one final thing. In my opinion, the two biggest issues that you, as a commission, have to decide, not just in this variance, but in any variance, there's two things that you really have to hone in on. Number one, will the, will the proposal be out of character with the neighborhood? And the second, would there be any adverse effect on the neighborhood? So let's take a look at that. Would this affect, be out of character with the neighborhood? I didn't have time to submit this as a, as an exhibit, but what we did do is, we went down to the site, and we have your town map, and on the, on the west side, as you're looking at the map, that would be the left side of Honey Spot Road, we took a look at the lot sizes, because that's what we're talking about, lot size, we have one undersized lot. We took a look at about twenty or so properties that are from Browning Street to Stag Street, from Honey Spot, and we found that ten of those twenty properties in that industrial zone are lots on five thousand square feet. Five thousand square feet, that's that neighborhood, half of it, in that area. Five thousand square feet. We propose, our smallest lot is only, is eighty-three hundred square feet. So we're within, in character with, with that. Then we took a look on the opposite side. The opposite side of Honey Spot is residential, it's in the R M one zone. And that's where the biggest impact, in my opinion, on this eyesore is, with these poor residents, the people that live in and have their homes across the street, now, they're not all homes, they're commercial, too, across the street, but in particular, the residents driving by that eyesore every day, it hurts their values. So we took a look at the property from Columbus Avenue, down, off of Honey Spot, down to Marsenick, I think it's called, it's hard to read on this map. And there are forty, forty lots that have five thousand square feet. The minimum lot in an R M one zone is seven thousand five hundred square feet. So you can see that the majority, as a matter of fact, of those lots are undersized. Instead of seventy-five hundred, they only have five thousand. So this is a zone that has a lot of undersized lots. And that's important when you're granting a variance, because it shows that we're consistent with the neighborhood. And then the last issue before you, okay, you have a proposal that lots are a little undersized, but so are a lot of other lots there. But will it adversely impact the neighborhood? And I think, frankly, just common sense, and I hope you agree, that if you rid the neighborhood of that auto body shop, if you take away those unsightly cars that make it look like a junkyard, if you clean up the property from an environmental standard, and if you get a good tax-paying tenant eventually on that site, that's only got to result in a positive impact to the neighborhood. There's no, there's no negatives on this site. I will point, on this, in this application, I will point out one last, well, two last things. Right across Honey Spot Road from the, from the corner of Stag, where this seven forty junkyard is, or auto body, right across the street is the Stratford Community Health Center. And so you have people going in and out of the health center, looking at that property, and you have the rest, the rest of them are a lot of residential on that site as well. It's really an application that I believe warrants, warrants your approval. The last thing I want to say, I, we received a letter today, it was addressed to you, but I, you know, it was too late to be submitted into the record, according to your rules for this hearing, but I just want to highlight, it was a letter sent to you, to the zoning board of appeals, from international investors, and it says, Dear Commissioners, International is the owner of eight, eight sixty, eight six oh Honey Spot, contains an eighty-five thousand square foot building leased to Premier Graphics, a commercial printing business. We're familiar with the application for variances filed by Daytona Partners, and fully support any efforts and all efforts to clean up and redevelop seven forty Honey Spot Road auto body shop property, which will benefit the entire neighborhood and promote much-needed development. We hope you will consider the benefits to the neighborhood and permit the Daytona Partners to move forward with this proposal. And that, I think, speaks volumes. You have a good taxpayer, a neighbor, recognizing that there's a lot of merit to this application. And so for all those reasons, including the fundamental reason that particularly Commissioner Young has honed in on tonight, the hardship issue, there is hardship. Don't forget, the hardship has to be unique to the property. It can't be a hardship that, that all the other properties in the neighborhood have. And this hardship is unique to the property because of the environmental condition on that property. That's a unique hardship, and it's, and we would like you to consider that and consider all the other arguments, and hopefully you can pass this application. Thank you.
Okay, before I open this up to the commissioners, if you have, we're not going to adjourn this hearing tonight, we're just going to recess it for two weeks. So if you have any additional information you think the commissioners should see, feel free to give it to Mr. Bansky, and prior to our two weeks, when we go down to petitions, we'll have an opportunity to look at it. With that, commissioners, any questions? Ms. Young?
Mary Young. So I heard the applicant identify that he was familiar with Mr. Bansky's April third comments, for which I'm grateful, thank you. I also heard the applicant offer additional information not made available to Mr. Bansky when he wrote his comments. I then heard the applicant suggest Mr. Bansky might see things differently based upon the information supplied this evening, leaving me with the question, does Mr. Bansky have any additional thoughts? As, although I do not conclude that his initial report was negative, I do conclude that it did not support the granting of the variance. So whether it's tonight or prior to May nineteenth, I, too, would be interested in hearing more from Mr. Bansky. Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Bansky?
Sure, this is Jay Havansky. So, you know, I understand the applicant's position on how, why they feel there's a hardship here at this, at this property. And, you know, when I say, when I say that the hardship appears to be self-created, I'm not suggesting that the applicant did the, you know, contaminated the property themselves, and I think they understand that, but it's more that they're proposing the property line that, that is, where the hardship is being created, that's one of them, or I'm sorry, where the variance is, the needed variance is being created. So in that sense, they are creating the hardship because that property line is not there. I, I would say the applicant is probably correct in their assessment that the proposed variances are somewhat consistent with the neighborhood. I'm not a hundred percent sure I agree with the position of, you know, everything else is nonconforming, so this should be as well. Or, so I'm not a hundred percent sure I agree with that. And, and, you know, I spoke with the applicant prior to the meeting, and I try to do my best to lay out the facts for the commission to assess, to assess the application for its merits and whether or not they feel a compliance with the Connecticut general statute's definition of a hardship. You know, I think that there is probably going to be some significant benefits to the neighborhood if this property does get cleaned up and the property owner retains it, redevelop, I'm sorry, remediates the property, redevelops it and holds on to it, or, or, you know, sells it potentially after it's cleaned up. However, there are no guarantees into what happens if a variance gets granted. So I think, I think the applicant has, has made a compelling argument for some of the positive, positive reasons why a variance would be beneficial not only to the applicant financially, but also to the, to the surrounding neighborhood. However, I do stand behind my position for, you know, what constitutes the legal hardship. And, you know, I think you'll find, and I think Attorney Willinger and Attorney Lord will agree, that you'll have a hundred attorneys and a hundred judges and a hundred planners that'll all have a hundred different opinions on something. So, you know, this is my assessment, and, you know, I leave that up, and I, I leave that up to the commission and their judgment to make the best decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any other commissioners have any questions? Are I hearing none? Does somebody have a question? Are hearing none, we'll move on to Prospect Drive, and if Miss Streets would read that into the record, thank you.
Thank you. And that's Streets here. One thousand five Prospect Drive, petition of Hoffman Landscapes, seeking a site plan review and waiver of section three point one four, to waive the required setback to a coastal resource from seventy-five to thirty-nine feet to construct an in-ground pool incidental to a single-family dwelling in an R S two zone. And a coastal site plan review has also been submitted with this application. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. Petitioner present?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, so, yeah, just identify yourself, please, for the record.
This is Matthew Byron, landscape architect with Hoffman Landscapes, representing my client for ten oh five Prospect Drive. In regards to our petition, we are requesting a, excuse me, one sec. We are requesting the setback for an in-ground swimming pool at seventy-five feet to be reduced to thirty-nine at this residence. The existing site conditions, as you will see on the site improvements plan, survey, land surveying services, we have a pool positioned on the eastern side of the property, western side of the property. We have played around with a couple different locations for the swimming pool, as far as the design goes, but felt this was the best location due to the site constraints with the side yard setback and the setback off of the coastal resource. If the pool is pushed outside of that setback, it is then forced to be not only in the side yard, but actually into the front yard of the property, which would, you know, negatively impact that space. I think it'd be very difficult to separate that from the driveway and the entry to the property. We also looked at changing the orientation of the pool, east-west, it still sits within that setback, and also then places the pool adjacent to the back of the house. So almost as if you were walk out the back door, you would be, you know, falling directly into the pool, allowing for some patio space on the northern side of the pool facing across the water and out at sea. The current site conditions, very flat site, minimal slope, minimal impact as far as runoff goes, as you will see in Mr. Havansky's report dated March twentieth. He had also mentioned that this was a He had also mentioned that this was a self-created hardship and I wish that was the case, but due to the orientation of the pool and the home, very difficult to place this pool and this pool environment outside of that seventy-five foot setback without forcing it into the front yard. The neighbor to the east, we had done some research, their existing pool is about thirty-two feet off of that resource line, looks like a newer in-ground swimming pool, very similar site conditions, very similar zone and lot size. Also, looking at the adverse effect to the neighborhood, minimal, if any, meets all of the setback minus the coastal resource. And I would hope that this would be passed by the commissioners. Any questions pertaining to the site plan? We had also submitted a rendering of what the site plan would look like. The rendering, property enhancements plan dated January twenty-third, twenty twenty, shows the proposed pool and the associated patio.
All right, commissioners, any questions? Ms. Young.
Mary Young for the record. My question's for the applicant. Again, I'm grateful you had a chance to review Jay Hibansky's March twentieth report. In his report, he asked the question of, why couldn't the pool be set back further along the side of the home in the hot tub area and retain its water views and meet all coastal resource setback requirements within the zoning regulations? Forgive me if you spoke to that already, but if you haven't, or if you could again, can you please identify why that is not an option?
Well, we, we had played around with that option and what it does is it forces not only a small section of the pool, but a fair amount of the patio space into the front yard, which would then affect the fence layout, the separation from the driveway entry into the pool environment, and then also the access for our client out of the house. That side of the house is not the main living space and it actually is a second bedroom. So I, I don't, I don't think it works for that space and I, I think it's, I think it's difficult to fit it in, even changing the orientation of it. So spinning that pool, which we played around with as well, and allowing for some space off the house and off of the property line, it, it doesn't work. And leaves limited space between the residence and the pool environment. So when I think pool environment, I think not only the pool, but the associated patio that comes with it and the, and the views associated with that and the orientation of it. Does that make sense, Mary?
Mary, Mary Young for the record. I understood the answer to your question. As you've heard, because I think you've been involved in our meeting since the beginning at seven o'clock, you know, we have this high bar we have to get to of legal hardship we have to find to support any variances granted. And when someone is asking for a swimming pool and the variance associated with that, that to me is a tough way to begin a meeting, as we're not talking about, can I get a roof over my head while I find shelter, but rather, can I have an amenity that does not conform to the requirement? So I'm just telling you my point of view that it's a challenge for you or anyone talking about seeking variance to support a pool, but I appreciate that you looked at Jay's report and answered my questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other commissioners have questions? All right, before I recess this meeting to May nineteenth, seven o'clock, I want to make sure, can all the commissioners make it? Anybody have a conflict with that?
No.
Mr. Hibansky.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, this is Jay Hibansky. You know, we, we never had an exact date dedicated for our next meeting and I might suggest, unless you want to set the date today, for, you might, I might suggest for me to allow, allow me to communicate with all the applicants to make sure that they can attend to find out what date works best. And then also communicate with the, with the commission, obviously, to make sure everyone else can attend. But if everyone can, if you would prefer to just set the date, whatever works for the commissioners and we'll let the applicants know, you have to show up.
Yes, I understand when you, when you recess the meeting, you have to recess it to a specific date, isn't that correct, Attorney Clark?
That's generally the best way to do it. Are, are any of the commissioners having issues as they sit here thinking right now about the nineteenth? Because I think Jay, and I'll coordinate with Jay to, to, to put another notice on the town website as to whatever date we eventually settle on to continue this public hearing. But I, I think, I think Mary Young is raising her hand, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mary, Ms. Young, go ahead.
I am available on the nineteenth, I presume we're talking about seven o'clock, but I have a follow-up question. My question is, since we began this meeting utilizing one of our alternates who gave their time to listen through all the testimony, can I assume, Mr. Chairman, that that same alternate will have the benefit of finishing what he started?
Correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, she, yeah, she sat in on it, so she should be, should be the voting on it. Mr. Hibansky.
Yes, Jay Hibansky here. Unfortunately, we're not going to be able to do the nineteenth because we're using this go-to-meeting license for the planning commission that evening. We're not going to be able to host two meetings on the same night. Might I suggest either the eighteenth or the twentieth?
Eighteenth is a Monday, the twentieth is a Wednesday?
Yes, that's correct. Jay Hibansky here.
All right, give me one second, I'll be right back. The dog has to go up.
And this is Jay Hibansky. I also just wanted to state for the record while the chairman checks something, that all the applicants had submitted their certificates of mailing for all the applications for this evening.
Jay, can you hear me? It's Mary.
Yes.
I meant to ask the, I think it was King Street property, if you could make sure your comments that I could not view on the website are uploaded before the next meeting? Thank you.
Yes, Jay Hibansky, yeah. I'm not sure why those comments didn't make it up there, I think I had a cut and paste error somewhere, but I will make sure those get, those get posted. Thanks, Commissioner Young.
Alex, do I have to set a specific date when I recess it? Or I can always set a date, we can change it, right?
Um, I mean, I guess it would be best to try to set a specific date, but I understand with, you know, you know, this new technology and everything, that that might not be possible tonight. I would just throw it out to the, to the ZBA to see if they're available, either the eighteenth or the twentieth, Mr. Chairman.
Is the ZBA available on the eighteenth, including the alternate that sat in today?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes, I didn't hear any no's.
Yes.
Miss Streets, you can make it, correct?
Yes.
All right, everybody can make it, so let, let me do this. Are we done speaking? All right, I'm gonna, what time is it? At eight-thirty, I recess this meeting until Monday, May eighteenth at seven P M. With that said, we don't have to adjourn. So Jay, you can shut off the recording.
We have to make a motion.
We don't, no, we don't need a motion.
No?
I just, no, I just, I just recess the meeting until the eighteenth at seven o'clock.
Okay.
See, that's one of the problems with Chairman, if he gets mad at everybody, he just recesses the meeting till next day.
Thanks, everyone, have a great night.
Stay safe.
Good night, thank you.
Night.
Good night.